We're reporting, we're streaming.
And you are online. All right, thank you very much. I'd like to call the order, Osage Minerals Council Regular Meeting Friday, March 3rd, 2023. With the presentation of the opening prayer today, I've asked my Councilman Shackleford to give us our prayer. With that, I'd like to please.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you at this morning hour to take care of the business for our shareholders. Please, Lord, just watch over our minds and our bodies and our spirits. We want to make sure that we do, make the best effort that we can in support of their wishes and desires. Lord, just watch over us as in all the people represented here today as we move through this day. Keep our hearts and our minds and our spirits healthy and happy, Lord. Watch over the members that are not here today, Lord. Watch over the families that have special needs here today, Lord, whether they're here or they're listening in or they're somewhere, Lord, and they need your grace. Lord, just please watch over them. Lord, we just ask you to watch over our nation as we move forward into the future and moving into the new time of year, the spring. Lord, just watch over all of us again. Let us make the best decisions in interest for the minerals people that we're here to represent. Bless all these things, your name, Father. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Second Chair, Mr. Wallace?
He is absent and will be for this meeting.
Councilwoman Curry? Councilwoman Curry? Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Councilman Reddell?
Here.
Councilman Reeford?
Present.
Councilman Shackleford?
Present.
Chairman Waller?
Present.
We have one.
And thank you. With that, I'd like to go under the, before I start, is there any other element that we need to adjust or take care of at this time? I've had no request on adding anything to the agenda. Could I actually go through this agenda today a little quicker since we're already in the situations we have? With that, I'd like to go to item 4A under new business, Ironhawk Energy Group, Saltwater Disposal Asemen. Mr. Anderson, you got the floor, sir.
Chairman Law, thank you guys for having me today. I appreciate it. Charles and I purchased some properties from Orion Exploration west of Shidler and the Florida package was a saltwater.
But we did get the original recording of the opening?
Yeah, I have the recording.
And now excuse us a second. I'll just, that's fine, dear. Continue.
As part of the package, saltwater disposal well had an easement from the production battery, the saltwater disposal well. We need to get that put in our names or get a new easement, whichever works the best for you guys and so they can get off of their bond. They've got a bond posted for that. And I think they've got working interest partners who are wanting them to get that release and distribute the money and what, hopefully have our bonds and everything, so that we can do that.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilman Reddorn?
It's not so much of a question. So there is an easement on this well already. It's just the former operator who needs their bond released. I'm just not familiar enough with the language of the easement, if there's a termination clause. Are you aware if they have a?
Well, most likely the easement is terminated. And that's why, that's why I request a new easement in Ironhawk's, in Ironhawk's name. As a matter of fact, if it hasn't terminated, it'd be good to go ahead and terminate it and get it in Ironhawk's name where it should be. That's what I was thinking. Maybe if we so choose to accept the offer to grant an easement, a new easement on this well to Ironhawk, that's formerly Orion, could include the termination of the existing easement and issuing of a new easement?
I entertain that in a motion. Would you like to prepare that?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, being that we terminate the existing saltwater disposal easement for this well in the subject well. Do I, we need to read that into the record or not?
Actually, on the resolution, it'll have to be installed in it. We'll go by this. Let me just see.
What is the legal description of the disposal well? It is in section, it's in the northeast quarter, section 16, 26 north, 5 east.
For the record, that's correct. Well number 1-16.
Okay. The motion would be to terminate the existing saltwater disposal easement previously issued to Orion for the well number 1-16 located in the northeast quarter of section 16, township 26 north, range 5 east. And then to issue a new saltwater disposal permit for the same well in favor of Ironhawk Energy Group JV for the acceptance of the amount offered. Is it in here?
Three hundred dollars annually.
Yeah, it was the same thing. It's the same amount that was for the previous easement, it's three hundred, it's three hundred bucks annually. And that is your offer? Yeah, three hundred. Okay. And to accept the amount of three hundred dollars for an annual payment. That's my motion.
Yes, I'll second that. Council, do we have any other discussion? Councilman Redcorn?
Call for a question.
May I call for a question, please?
Councilman Reddorn?
Yes.
Councilman Reddell?
Yes.
Councilman Reeford?
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, sir. We'll have that valid until the first week of resolution. Thank you, Councilman. Then I'd like to go next to item, Councilman Reddell, we'd like to talk about a letter to Senator Mullen. Councilman Reddell?
Thank you, Chairman. As y'all know, we're facing a strengthened crisis in the next thirty days or so, twenty-nine days actually, I guess.
Actually, to the really thirteen, fourteen days.
What's gonna happen?
Regulations, regulations. I talked to Lacy, our chief of staff, which she left. She said Senator Mullen is a junior senator, but he's on a committee for the, an Indian committee.
Indian fair, sir.
Indian affair. That pulls a lot of weight up there. And I don't think it would, don't hurt to do anything, I don't think, at this point, you know? We need all the support we can get, you know? And one thing about him, he's a Republican. And Republicans are pro-oil, as far as I've known, you know? I think a letter to Senator Mullen asking for his support, maybe for a delay, you know, or stay that could help with the putting out the regular, final rule on the regulations, that would be appropriate, in my opinion. I'm open for suggestions, Council, to think of what else to put in there, you know?
Counsel.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. If I remember correctly, we already have a letter from what we call the Oklahoma Congressional Delegation consisting of Senator Langford, Senator Enhoff, and Congressman Lucas, maybe.
Yes.
Those three wrote letters similar to what you're requesting now on our behalf or something similar, if not identical, to what Councilwoman, Councilman Reddell was suggesting. So I, I think it'd be a good idea to reach out to the new Senator Mullen, ask him to do the same, and Paul Sues would be up. So I'm in favor of that.
Councilman Reddorn?
Mr. Reddell, I appreciate you bringing us to the council. I think it's a great idea. You're asking, what should we add? I mean, there's thoughts there, as we have, we've got regulations now. And if they want to come and revisit those, we need to start there. And if they modify, it seems like they've started way over here and trying to get us to go there. So that's my feedback is, you know, we've got standard 226. In my understanding, we're supposed to be fault until they change it. But I think they're still, they're just trying to shove these extra stuff in and no one's ever approved anything. So that's my feedback. I'd say let's start with the 226 and as is. And if they want to, we want to keep that, but if they want to change it, then let's start there.
Are you done, sir?
Done, yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I like that suggestion, but I also think that maybe this, I'm thinking that maybe Senator Mullen may be relying upon us to, what is it you want me to say? As, not to put words in his mouth, but give him some guidelines, just what it is that we want to accomplish. So maybe we could just get him to say that he supports our position and then we just tell him and recite what our position is, maybe with Raleigh Wilson, who wrote the letter for the other Oklahoma Congressional delegation, have him draft a paragraph which is our position without getting in the weeds, just a general position and have, and just ask this new Senator Mullen to support our position.
And the letter which we had Paul received.
That's right. So that may be a way to approach it.
Councilman Shackleford?
I, if we were in the sky too, could we have a discussion among us in this direction? Also believe too, just requesting Senator Mullen for his office to write a letter that I agree with, that will lend support to what our endeavors happen to be. At the same time, just the letter, him to support, but we have to, like Paul mentioned, which you, Reeford, which we have to explain to him what our endeavors are, the fact that this has been an ongoing situation since 2016. I think the letter Paul mentioned was in 2020 from the original delegation. We have to, I believe, in my opinion, express to them that we've got a plan out with some, maybe some soft dates of how we plan to roll things out on our end of it. And this is our plan moving forward, as opposed to just asking for time. I think we have to put up the pulse of, we don't need to dive too deep into the weeds, but yet I think just a blanket letter is something that's, I think we need to put more detail into kind of what we're looking for and why we're looking for it, you know? Because it was rolled out real fast. But at the same time, this is something that's didn't happen overnight. This thing's been in the works for a couple of years. And so I think our first blush response to this needs to be something that's meaningful and that has some content to it, as opposed to say, well, we need more time, more time for what? You know, I mean, we need to put a little detail into that to explain exactly what our shareholders are wanting from us, what they expect from us. And this needs to be something that happens, not a month from now, this needs to be something happening in the next ten days. Because of the seventeenth, I think is the timeframe where the Bureau has said that that was their deadline for accepting those kinds of things. And so I never hear, a while back, they talked about consultations and things like that. So I think we put in, we add that detail there where we've met with Mr. Streeter, just helping us, and we've discussed future consultations. And this is our plan moving forward, like the first ninety days, and then six months later, this is what we're, kind of what we're looking at, maybe how things are going to fold out and maybe the encompassing, maybe a year's time that buys us that time, but just asking for time, I think we need to tell kind of what we feel, how much time we want to need moving forward. I believe just a blanket letter is too broad of a stroke. We need to have some detail on that. Thank you.
Sorry, I called on Councilman Reddell and then Councilman Reddorn.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with Councilman Reeford and Shackleford, that the dialogue needs to be very important. Has to be explained exactly, position we're in, you know, and what he could possibly, you know, help us with. And I think he's part church.
Yes. I won't hold that gift to me. Not mean nothing to all of us, sir.
We don't have nothing to lose.
See, right, sir. I've actually asked for Councilman Reddorn and Councilman Reddorn. Bringing back my history here, I used to like Van Halen, Sammy Hagen. Sammy had a song, "I Can't Drive Fifty-Five." To me, that's what we're dealing with. What's the law? Well, it's standing 226, until further changed. In the 2011 agreement, we're supposed to roll out the new regs, but the government and us are supposed to agree in that rolls out. None of that's happened. So my stance is, I mean, we can get them cloudy and we got time, we want whatever. My voice is saying, we need to tell them, there is a standing law. It's 226. And we, why are we not sticking with that? And if we don't, then what's the new plan? But I think we're, we're trying to put a 25 mile an hour out here to live by and who's calling it? Well, to me, they're not following the agreement, the settlement agreement for us to sit down with them.
Number one.
And when I, Streeter was sitting here, he was quoting the trustee. And I was like, you can't use the trustee because we voted against him in Minerals 3. So, you know, they're just not following procedure in the settlement agreement. Maybe that's what we need to say. Start out with 226 is here, that's not a shock to our producers. If we're going to follow or we're going to change this, let's stick with the October 4, 2011 agreement between Osage shareholders in the United States that we both come to an agreement before we roll out something new. Maybe that language needs to be there. I don't know, but I want a more succinct, here's where we stand. That's what I would like to say, maybe one way.
I agree with Mr. Reddorn. I mean, the more meaning and bullets and processes you've applied to that, it's passed, and the past has been voted on and proved on. I mean, you add those things to it, too, that adds more weight to it, more significance to exactly what he's saying. At the same time, we look back at the process and the, they've come here and they've met with us, they've heard our concerns, they're in the sky too, you know? But that's still not enough, you know? Because in the past, they've, we've yet to be able to sit down, this council specifically, has yet to be able to sit down with Mr. Streeter, with Coquelinos, and the people that would listen to us on the bureau side and heard our concerns and been able to hand them a draft and say, you know, 226 is what we were working around. But if you're, if you're offering this big change here, and here's our response to some of those changes, we really don't feel like we should have to defend what's already in place. But if you're going to force our hand to do that, then we better, we better be able to be proactive enough to have a response that's going to be able to stand up to what they're trying to make us do, make our producers do. And rolling that stuff out in an expedited manner, I don't know if it's to catch us off guard or what that happens to be, but we still need to be able to stand up and say, you know, here's what we're willing to do, here's what we're willing to accept, and these other things are unacceptable in our opinion. And it's, I feel rushed. And I can't feel rushed on anything when it pertains to this change of decisions. We should be able to have the time to vet these things out. And so again, having, as Mr. Reeford mentioned, having our attorney, Mr. Wilson, part of this process, including Mr. Mullen, the other delegations, representatives from the state of Oklahoma, whether it comes in a resolution form or what we're, in this body, a letter, whatever needs to be pertaining, but I think it's something that needs to be rolled out as fast as possible.
Yes, and I think that the resolution is dictating getting the letter out immediately to get ahead of that. Before any other comments, I sat on the Rural Policy Committee at the White House with him. Last time we were sitting with the United States Government in the White House, they got into a battle royal over what the feds were doing as Department of Interior, and he called on it. So he's up to speed on a lot of our production elements and that effort. So he won't be caught cold footed. I like the idea of just joining us with the other representation. I know that some other factions are already met with him as far as our producers, and I think that this will coordinate real well. Also, I think that we keep it down to those two items. Yes, we're in the same predicament the last time we sat in the White House, and the Department of Interior attacked him. I sat between them, and they got quite a battle over, you need to do your job. So the senator turned back, said, no, you need to do your job, I'll get the funding. So that's another effort we need to look at. I like coordinating that alone, those two issues. Also, with the, combining these efforts of them, I think we don't stand so alone as the position we're taking and keeping. But with that, I'd like, go ahead, Council, but I'd like to make a motion where, I'd like to make the motion that we instruct our legal counsel, Raleigh Wilson with Patterson Law Firm, to draft a letter similar to the letter that was already presented by the Oklahoma Congressional delegation in support of our position, similar to the language used. Leave it to the discretion of Mr. Wilson to edit that. If he had thoughts since the drafting of that first letter, if there's something that he would want to tweak, leave it up to his discretion to do so, with the understanding that we're wanting Senator Mullen's letter of support of our position. Joining with the other constituency that he's representing in, representing the Senate.
With the effort to have this letter drafted and presented from Mr. Mullen within the March 17th deadline of the comment period.
Yes, sir, and that's another issue I'd like to, without going into an executive element, that's being prepared right now, this will be a perfect time to coordinate that. But also, even in the last resolution this council approved for the law firm to write the letter for the seventeenth, it states in there that Mr. Wilson's allowed to make and tweak the letters or the situation, and we approved it. So that could be added at any time. I second it. Council, would you form make that form of a motion? Councilman Reddorn?
Yes, the motion, yes, the motion is for us to instruct Raleigh Wilson of the Patterson Law Firm to work with Senator Mullen, the drafting a letter from Senator Mullen's office to the appropriate entity set out in the, in the comments of the CFRs, Dakota Federal Regulations, supporting our position, of our opposition to these new CFRs.
Councilman Reddell, will you second that?
Second.
Okay. Counsel.
Just clarity, we're saying we are opposing these proposed CFRs.
I support that.
Thank you. I ask for no comment from the council, but it does feel good once in a while when you have support here because we'd like our families to be here. I'm on my sixteenth year. I'm on my thirtieth year of being up here, including that, and boy, we're going to get ready to get into another dogfight. I ain't lost one yet, I don't plan one.
That's right.
With that being said, call for the question. And thank you very much, I mean.
Councilman Reddell?
Yes.
Councilman Reeford?
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Reddorn?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Short story, last time I went to the White House, I got pretty well checked out, more than a man should. As I assumed the position. The next day I showed up with Senator Mullen in there, they literally carried my briefcase and all in for me, didn't check my ID or nothing. I said, just yesterday you had me in that line over there with them others. But I know that he's a supportive of all nations and I think it'd be to our credit to get that group together, because I think we're going to stay with him then. The other is going to have to look at, these are the folks that handle their funding. That omnibus has got to go past Lucas Coe, Enhoff is very good for us, but also Senator Langford, so we stood up and promoted the Osage Reservation in the public comments in front of Congress. Very few have ever done that, and I guarantee you this man will help us too. Thank you. Let's move on down the agenda. I have a saltwater disposal, Rick Hudson. And thank you for coming, I mean, Rick.
I apologize, I think I missed you. My name's Rick Hudson. First off, this is the first time I've ever attended a council meeting, so I may not know the proper protocol. So if that's the case, just call me out on it. Anyway, I've been in business here for, I'm from Husker originally, been in business here forty-one years. Went to, I'll use your first names because that's all I, Byron and Tony and Kenny were my next door neighbors, distant relative to the rest of them, Reddorn. So I've been around a while, but I don't, I'm not acting like a lot of people in the business. Anyway, I appreciate y'all putting up with me today, and I'll make my comments on what you were discussing, so I don't get in any trouble, I don't have to pack. But anyway, I've got two, two questions about two easements. One is I inherited whenever I bought a lease from Dennis Clark. Probably don't know him, but he was partners with R.D. Haynes years ago.
Ronnie?
Pardon me?
Fastron? Ronnie Haynes?
No, R.D.
R.D., okay.
Yeah, he was a short guy. He was from Husker, he was in the business for a long time, but he passed away in eight years. So I kept the easement in place, although we had to plug out the lease that we were using to dispose it into the well. But I was always wanting the, my neighbor lease owner, which was the Stanton family, to take it over because it's just three hundred yards from your Stanton property. And we could never get together. So finally I talked to him the other day, and I said, Derek, do you want that well? Because if you don't, I'm going to end up having to plug it. And he said, yeah, I want it. I said, well, I'll find out from the council what we have to do to try to get that transferred over to him. So I know roughly what you're supposed to do, but I don't know, I wanted to go through the proper procedure so I didn't get in trouble. So I would like to transfer that, that disposal well easement, and I've got the legal and everything right here, to the Stanton family. And I just had it tested the first of February, and I've had it tested every five years for twenty years or better, and it's always passed the test. But it's not, not being used, and I know that I'm going to have to do something with it, and I'd rather let him have it than, and I'm not selling the thing, I'm just giving it to him so that he can take it over.
That was on the question I had.
Yeah, I'm not doing anything like that. Mark Hendricks, he's aware of the situation, I've talked to him in the past about it. So that's the one thing. So I'd like to, you can tell me exactly what I need to do, or go to the BIA, and they will tell me what I need to do, but I would like to get that transferred over to the Stanton family. And I'm sure y'all know who Leo Stanton is.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilman Reddorn?
Okay, so we're on item number two on his, on his email, discussing transfer of the saltwater disposal. Because you've got two different wells there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about the number?
Yes, the number two.
Okay, so my first thought is, back to our last one, is I don't know what the terminology is or the provisions are in the actual easement asked to, are they transferable or not? I just haven't seen one in a while. I don't know. We could do like we did just a moment ago, cancel the existing one, issue a new one to Mr. Stanton if he was here, unless you're here to represent him.
No, I just told him I would find out what we need to do, and then we would go from there.
Okay, I think, so I think for one thing, trans, granting an easement or transferring an existing easement is one issue. Transferring the ownership or the operatorship of a well is entirely different. That goes through the recent six of the EPA. There's a way to do it. I think through the, through the Superintendent's Office here, but it would have to be transferring the permit. And I think you can transfer a permit, I know you can.
Yeah.
I know you can transfer the permit through the EPA.
Yeah.
But I think it starts with the Osage Agency.
That's correct.
So I think, just to give you the advice, my advice would be for Mr. Stanton to determine if he wants the well or not, if he's willing to extend. If he's willing to accept the plugging liability of the well and ability to post a bond, which the superintendent will require. Once that's determined, then Mr. Stanton needs to come back to us and ask us for a easement on that well. And he also needs to uh, check with the region six about transferring the permit. Cause we've got two different documents. One is our easement. The other is the permit, which is that OS four oh four seven permit. That goes through the uh, the EPA's jurisdiction. So I'd say, have Mr. Stanton, if he's interested in doing that, accepting that.
Well, I, that's what I'll do. I'll make sure he's interested. I'll touch base with the EPA. Make sure they're willing to transfer the permit to, to him and then get with the BIA and get them to put up a new easement. But how do I cancel mine?
Do that, yeah.
That's all for us to answer. That will be the Bureau of Indian Affairs under the contracts, you know, the nation's licensing program. We're getting a little bit farther out than we need to go. You need to have Mr. Stanton come back. I'd call the Bureau first and ask about, the easiest question is how do I go and get this assignment? And because the one previously, that was a producer land onlys. This one has a different element to it. And I'd rather hear what the Bureau says. Come back on the fifteenth with that uh, while we're sitting here with them. And I think we could do a resolution.
In this body, I just want to make clear too, so that we're not stepping out of our boundaries or, or, or representing that we have any knowledge or authority beyond what, what we as mental councils, you know, are elected and have this responsibility here. These are suggestions from us. The easement, the easement is a different story. That's something that we can grant. But all this other stuff we're talking about are suggestions for you to go to the BIA for the one thing and the EPA for the other. Uh, but don't hold us accountable to that. And if that's all we're, if that's it on that.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty straightforward. And I thought that would be the case, but I want to make sure I.
Counselman Redcord.
Yeah, okay, for the, the number one.
Yeah, number one, what's the deal with that well? I'm, I'm requesting a, an easement on a disposal well on a lease that has been canceled. And it's the southeast quarter of thirty-two, twenty-nine, ten, well number one. And I would like to get an easement on that. I have a lease right next to it and I've had issues with my disposal well. And I want to use it as a backup. It's literally, our tank batteries are set next to each other. So. So the quarter section has been canceled. I confirmed that with Kami and uh, into BIA.
When did you do that?
I'm sorry?
When did you coordinate that to the Bureau?
Oh, I, with, with Kami?
Yes.
Oh, it's, I don't, I've done it, did it two different times. Latest was about two weeks ago.
Yes, sir. Counsel, then I want to go to Counselman Redcord. Sorry, Cat, you have.
It has, it has an inventory number already, so it is a permitted injection well.
Yes.
You know, if it's in good standing, if it's in its last.
Didn't wear my hearing aid, so.
You know when the last MIT was for this well?
It was in uh, I think the new one is due April of twenty-three. So I think it was in April of two thousand and eighteen.
What uh, what kind of production? Assume that you need this disposal well to produce your offsetting leases.
Right.
What kind of production do you have on your offsetting leases?
It makes three barrels a day.
Yeah.
Makes about seventy barrels of water a day. I have a permitted disposal well, but I've had trouble with it. And then when it got canceled, I thought that that might be a good backup for me. And uh, so that, and I have another well, producing well I uh, would like to produce, but it makes too much water for my existing disposal well. So I thought, well, that might be a good way to get out of the way. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Counselman Redcord, thank you for your patience.
My understanding of both of these, you're asking for an easement.
Say that again?
Both of these, you're asking for an easement.
No, one is the first, the second I, the first item you're talking about, I'm just asking what I need to do to try to transfer that easement to another leasing. So there's no action there today on your part. I will follow up on what I need to do there.
Number one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And number one is I'm asking for an easement on uh, an active, well, it's not active now, but uh, an existing saltwater disposal.
Number two, you want an easement for this other well?
He answered you incorrectly, counsel. The first effort is the one that is number two.
Right, yeah, yeah. Number two, I was just asking questions about what I would need to do to transfer that easement to another leasing. The first item is I would like an easement on that well as an existing disposal.
Okay, um. Yeah, I, if, to me, if it's just an easement, we ought to just root request for easement. That's my feeling.
Someone open question. Say that.
You're good. You're real good. What I, what I'd like to ask is that everything's got a little bit of a stigma to it. This, the first issue we talked about, number two, is that you're correct to go to the Bureau. They'll tell us how they can assign the saltwater disposal. The second one's got another question that I can't do a resolution on. Or we shouldn't until you do the same thing. And the Bureau of Indian Affairs says we are allowed to come in and give you that.
Okay.
Easement. And I'd like to wrap up both up at the same time while they're sitting here.
Well, that's fine.
And usually that's what we try to do is uh, Wednesday, but this council's been real good at trying to get some things done.
But if I do that, I get the, I need to get a letter from them?
I, I would in your case because of the cancellation part. If that had been a terminated lease, we could do what Counselman uh, Redcord brought up. We could just do a resolution.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, Counsel, uh, Chairman Waller. I don't know if it's been canceled.
That's what I need you to find out.
So I'll find that out. I've used both terms and.
Don't worry.
In my ignorance, I didn't.
Oh, no, oh, no. We've had the opportunity to see everything under half the hospital woman could see with that. If you'll just get that information for us, we could uh, give you some relief on the fifteenth.
Okay.
On both issues.
Okay, alright.
Counsel.
It's just a phone call next door. Couldn't we just?
Yeah.
Ask him to stick around, have a cup of coffee and we just make a phone call?
I would take a moment. We're going to table this a second.
I'd pick up the phone.
I, I'd step over to Bureau of Indian Affairs and uh, check in with them about this procedure on these two assignments.
I, I, I don't want to put you out, but.
No, but we'll still be here, brother and I will.
Could we just have him ask the superintendent?
Yes.
Or the acting superintendent, who is over there with authority, to send Chairman Waller an email immediately. A request to do so, stating whether or not that lease is tracked.
Right.
Has been canceled or terminated, which one? And is it completed?
Yeah.
Or is it still in the process?
Yeah.
That's important to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Has it been canceled? Has it been terminated? And I would say on the second item, just so we don't get confused with going to them, let's just table it for right now. And I will do my homework in more detail and bring that back to you. That way we're not mixing things up. I make the motion, we table this temporarily.
I, I, let's just table it.
Okay, then.
And uh, second.
I, to me, the better question would be if we pass an easement, approve for an easement, would it work today? And they'll tell us, yeah or no. And it's their job to figure it out if it's durable or not. And to my mind, I'll just say this, every time we put something off two weeks, we were putting off two weeks of production in my view. So we gotta get speedy with these approvals when these guys come in and want whatever they're wanting to do out there. That's, that's my view.
Well.
One of eight.
It doesn't have to shut down. So I'm producing. So it's not, it's not holding me up in that regard. But I want to get it resolved so that I do know what I'm looking at in the future.
Yeah, I, I want to keep you moved.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate you.
You can go over there today and talk to them, come back, but by the time we get out of here, we might give you what you're looking.
Yeah, I don't mind if I look in there and just trying to get an audience with the most Jackie or.
Thank you, thank you. Just continue with the, what we're getting ready to do on the table. And soon as we uh, table it, I need you to step over there and you're gonna have to coordinate both issues. But that one you want to single out and bring back to us, they're not gonna do an assignment.
Right, yeah, no, I know that.
And on the second one, you're not the representative of the company. We won't be able to give that anything.
Yeah, no, I, I, I know that.
They're gonna tell you what you need. You can come right back to us. With that, I need a second.
Second, call the chair.
The name, I have a motion on floor by Counselman Redcord, seconded by Counselman Shackelford. We're going to table item four C at this time. And I'd like to call for the question.
Um, walk next door.
You, you're ready to go.
Thank you.
We'll just do a little housekeeping.
Alright.
Counselman Red, Redcord?
Yes.
Counselman Shackelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Counselman Big Horse?
Yes.
Counselman Redcorn?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. With that, I have also item four D, Osage LLC request for assistance, Mr. Bourbon Hamilton. Is he available today? Did they, did they call in on the zoom?
Yeah.
Call for him one time over there.
Like uh, oh, wait, I'm sure we do have some.
Chairman, stand by. On that last, stand by.
Not that they're unweird. Lo, can you tell us who you are? Number three, three, two, seven, eight, three, three. Lo, can you tell us who you are?
Melissa Curry.
It's Melissa Curry.
Thank you. Show that our, show her that she's been present at the council.
Chairman, on that last vote, uh, my name wasn't called.
Sorry, I can't read more.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry for the oversight.
I'll go yes.
Okay, then I just want to ask you, that already had five votes and with that, with it, with your pleasure of uh, supporting that, I won't go back on that. Anyway, it wasn't a table, but uh, I'll never miss you a vote on anything of, of element. Thank you.
I understand.
Uh, we have our councilwoman with us. Do we have any representation for the Osage LLC?
Uh, I don't see any.
At this time, I'd like to uh, table that also. I would entertain a motion.
Tell them.
I'll second it. I'd motion on floor by Counselman Redcord, seconded by Chairman Waller. We'll table the request at this time until we hear from Osage LLC. We can uh, have it available also for the fifteenth. Call for the question. Excuse me, discussion?
Discussion. I've read the chain of emails in regard to this and I was just wondering what, in regard to Mr. Rebar's response to the resolution on this, what, what is our position on this? It seemed to be something between the lease, the producer, the land, the surface owner. I don't know when, what responsibility or whatever we had to do with that. I'm, I'm not quite clear about.
Yes, is there any other comment?
Chairman, uh, just for the people logged in that doesn't, that's not familiar with the correspondence that Captain Shackelford mentioned. Uh, I guess we should disclose what, what the subject matter was. We have a surface owner who happens to be, I believe in this case, uh, the Osage Nation concerning the Osage Ranch. Apparently had a grass fire that was, we were told by Osage, the representative of, of the Osage LLC, that the cause of the fire was that a, uh, caused by a oil and gas producer.
Yes, sir.
And I think they were looking to ask for some possible relief or assistance.
Yes, sir.
In reparation of some sort or remediation or repair or. With, with him not being here, I don't know exactly what he wanted, but it was a surface owner matter that's typically does not involve the mental council. Usually a dispute of any nature outside of the original right of ingress and egress in the lane of pipelines and, and uh, infrastructure that's embedded in an oil and gas lease. My knowledge, the other issues regarding surface ownership and disputes uh, is not under our authority, I don't think. And I believe that this probably should be taken up with the superintendent. And I don't even know if the superintendent gets too involved. I do know from uh, past experience, the superintendent will at times intervene and talk to both parties. But that's outside of the mental council.
Yes.
Uh, responsibilities. So that's the issue on the agenda for all those that are logged in or listening at some point in the future of what this issue is. It's a surface owner issue involving, it just happened to involve the nation being the surface owner. It's come to us probably for some advice, maybe some enforcement of some sort, but from my personal experience, it's my understanding that it doesn't involve us. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Counselman Redcord.
Thanks, Chair. Um, and we appreciate this group coming and requesting our assistance. Um, I believe in the past, if they didn't show, we just moved on.
Yes.
So I'm not wondering why we're voting on something here.
There are.
It might have been resolved. It might have, you know, and so I, I don't want to make any comments until I hear from this individual. They are members of the Osage people and I, I don't know what they're talking, you know, I read the emails, but you know, that, that person sent here and telling us, uh, in the past, we just moved on. I, I don't understand why we're making a vote. Um, so, and then that's my position.
Counsel, we're just voting table.
Still that.
Even, even at that.
Even at that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just move on. That's first, and then he might, this gentleman might show back up. I don't know. But if he shows, I'd like to hear what the issue is and go from there.
Thank you for your question.
Yes, under discussion, call for the question.
Counselman Shackelford?
No.
Chairman Waller?
Is this to table?
This is to table.
Yes.
Counselman Big Horse?
No.
Uh, Counselman McCurry?
No.
Counselman Redcorn?
No.
Counselman Reddick?
Yes.
Counselman Rebar?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Then I did, I am going to go ahead and move down the agenda with that being said, so it's available. But I will tell you this, you're not going to answer anything on the valuation that's council's talking about as a council. That will have to be taken to executive uh, for the privilege because we are talking the nation and feasible property. Thank you, Counsel.
Yes, I'd just like for clarification purposes, uh, try to understand what that action actually does or does it do the fact that we voted not to table the agenda act. So the agenda item, it's my understanding, is still on our agenda today?
If I go back to it.
And we may see or hear from this person after a while.
Yes.
So we just leaving it on the agenda?
Yes. Once, once we vote for adjournment, if it's not available or discussed, it moves on to the fifteenth.
Oh, well, excuse me. Why would it do that? Why would, why would, why would it go on to the next future, uh, future meeting?
Because they voted.
Because they voted, uh, no, to not table it.
So? It's on today's agenda. If they've not asked it, be on.
Easy on me, though.
I'm just saying, where does it say that they want to be on some other future meeting? Show me that. It's one thing to table this and, and, and not, and, and not table it and leave it on today's agenda. But you just can't assume that they're gonna be on next month's agenda, or the month after, or next year's agenda. It just had to pop up sometime. So I think the tabling matter does not, place it on a, on a future agenda. That's why I've classified that. Where would it say that? That's all.
And I appreciate that. What I will do is say, just as I said, we will keep it here till adjournment. And then in that case, they would have to approve this request. Excuse me, Lanay, go ahead.
May I contact them and try to reach out to them?
That's their job to get here. Did, did you hear my sixteen years' worth of this? I've been through this before. And I understand exactly what Mo's saying here. It's just that no idea is that, if they're not available, I'd like, like to keep the option open, as my council voted for. Sometimes I get beaten to vote, but I gotta let it go once I get beaten, to move on. And I will not have it on the national list. Uh, any questions? Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, they're on the agenda. They, they, they shouldn't be here present. Well, if they're not here, they won't.
Thank you. I'd like to go on down to the next item. I'd like to take a vote for executive session, and just take a ten minute break. Second, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilman Shackelford. Uh, call for executive. Uh, call for the question.
Chairman Waller?
Ma'am?
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Bigwors?
Yes.
Councilman McCurry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Reddick?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll take a short ten minute break, and then we'll come back. Excuse me, the only item available today, personnel, Councilman.